...of the planning commission for May 23, 2017 to order. First order of business will be to approve the agenda, but before we do that, Sonny, I'd like you to introduce Robert.
We have a new member on the board tonight, Mr. Robert Walker. He's replacing Cheryl Dean, who passed away. And Robert has agreed to sit on the board, so he will be one of the members from now on.
Glad to have him on the board. If you want to look over that information, we'll go ahead and get a motion to approve the agenda. Okay. You have a motion to approve the agenda in favor, say aye. Next order of business is to adopt the meetings from the previous meeting. Adopt the minutes from the previous meeting. Do you have a chance to read over the other business? I have a motion to approve. I will second since Mr. Walker is with us here. In my favor. Adopt the minutes, say aye. So the next order of business is to hear a request to annex parcel 104-1-53, which is 2.34 acres into the city of Jasper as C2 general commercial, which is located at 1860 Highway 53 West in Jasper. And at this time, Sonny, I'd like you to go ahead and tell us what you got. Give us some explanation, please.
All right. The CSC properties is going to buy this property. They're requesting the annexation, and you have in your packet the permission of Mr. Gary Copeland and this Roland for them to do that. So the annexation will be for CSC and its property. I keep referring to it as the Old Pepsi property, which it is the Old Pepsi building. A lot of people are young and don't know what that is, so.
You know where that was?
It is at, as I said, it's at 1860 Highway 53 West, where you turn in to go to Kroger and Home Depot and all that up and down. If anyone would like to see if this is the building layout or the property that they will be purchasing off of this 2.34 acres. Right here, if you need to see that. So that's probably what you want to.
May I take a look, sir?
Yes. This is 53 right here. restaurant. And so if anyone has any questions they want to ask, oh.
I do, sir.
One second. Did you sign in and can you tell us your name before?
Absolutely. My name is Crystal Weaver, franchisee at Corn Food Group.
Okay. If you'll give us a second, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Sure, I apologize. I just wanted to respond. Thank you.
Questions? Kevin, your honor? I've got just a couple of questions, if it's okay. The location of the property, I would guess that you're representing the engineering company?
I am, yes, sir.
I guess my question would be ingress, egress type stuff. Where, you know, what's the plan for, you know, getting traffic in and out of there?
Absolutely. So as you can see, we're using the existing curb cuts. I'm Connor Patton, Civil Engineering, by the way. I'm representing CSC Properties as a civil engineer consultant. We'll be using the existing driveway curb cut on Highway 53 and the extension of Camp Creek, or sorry, Camp Road. You know, those are our plans, use those. We've been in contact with George DOT on, you know, turn lanes in the site. They're going to require a left turn lane into our site off Highway 33, as well as a D cell lane off of Highway 33 as well. So that left turn lane in will help kind of, you know, not have, have people stacking up on Highway 53 blocking vehicles from going straight. So that'll definitely help damper the traffic issue if there were to become one because of people turning on the side.
There should still be an entrance in from the Kroger parking lot, that road?
From Camp, from the extension of Camp Creek, or Camp Road, sorry. Yes, sir. It would be. So where the driveway is now, it's a very wide driveway. We've probably narrowed that down, and that would be our, we'd keep that entrance point.
Were there any exits, you know, like a break, what do you have, like entrance on one side and exit on the other?
These are both two-way, both entrance and exits. The site kind of circulates through the front half as a two-way driveway, but around the back, it'll be a one-way, you know, counterclockwise rotation throughout the site to help the circulation.
Any folks about to speak, then we'll. Okay. You have four.
Thank you, so kind of. I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Connor Patton.
Okay, Mr. Patton. So my question for you all and Mr. Patton is, there's been existing businesses here at this intersection that have been here over a decade. The Wendy's has been here 15 years, and Bojangles has been here 12 years. We've been asking for a D cell lane or even just a turn lane for many, many years, and it's never been granted for us. As a matter of fact, when you turn left into Bojangles off of Highway 53, where Chevron and Bojangles are, there is no left-hand turn lane. And so because of this, you have to create your own, and it's very dangerous. Furthermore, from Camp Road, when I built 12 years ago, I was told to put in a turn lane that would access for a right-hand turn onto 53. Unfortunately, that turn lane has been a right-hand turn lane to nowhere. It has never been approved to be accessible to Highway 53. The problem that this has also created is a major backup of traffic onto Camp Road, which we have been waiting to be wide for quite some time. And also, we don't have a right turn lane in to Bojangles off of Camp Road. We've expressed this need for about four years now. Last year, I had a great meeting with Mayor Weaver. We sat out on that corner, we stood actually, out on the corner, and we watched the traffic and the problems and the congestion. And he agreed that we needed SPOSA to pass before we could address the congestion concerns. And as we all know, SPOSA did pass. My concern is, is that we're already overly congested at this intersection. In fact, if you look at my neighbor, Mr. Paul Ramblower, who owns 57 Wendy's, who could not be here tonight because he was in Cherokee, North Carolina, he will be at the city council meeting, but he's very disheartened to think that he's yet to have any access to Highway 53, and yet he's been there for 15 years. As a matter of fact, he was only allowed an exit-only access onto 53, approximately right across from where you are proposing to put both an ingress and an egress, two-way traffic. Furthermore, I have video footage that I've been taking just in the last month so that I could show you, not only has the congestion been there for over a decade, but especially it's been exasperated in the past six months. Furthermore, Popeyes, on average, produces how many cars per day, sir?
One second. From general ITE code, if you look up the use for a drive-through, roughly, you know, 700?
Correct. So in a month, we're talking about 21,000 additional cars that would be coming through that intersection, correct?
Half of which are already through traffic uses, so people that are already using, you know, on Highway 53 passing through the site.
Right. They may not, but they may not be stopping.
Correct. They won't be stopping, but they would be passing through on Highway 53, so it's usually half and half.
Okay. I don't know where you made that number from, but 21,000 cars of additional traffic going through, going through that intersection, I assure you, will pose a major problem and a threat to our citizens here in Jasper, who have already complained at great lengths, who are already creating their own left-hand turn lanes because we haven't been able to get that approved, who are already complaining because they have one shared entrance into Wendy's and can't get anything else approved, and again, have been operating in this city and this county for over a decade. I love this county, I live in this county, and I would love to be able to have the access that Mr. Patton here is proposing for a new business. I would love to have those privileges. And please, please mind you, the Copelands and the Rollins are good friends of mine, and I have the utmost respect for them, especially for them as businessmen, and Gary is a good mentor to me. But I know it would be remiss of me not to fight this battle, and it can so adversely affect my sales, the people of Jasper, the sales of our neighbor, and I assure you that our same-store sales would be affected drastically in a negative impact. I urge you that we need to fix the current issues that we currently have and move that forward before we add any additional congestion. And I also remind you all that I've been meeting and discussing this with Mayor Weaver for years. This is nothing new about Bojangles upset that Popeyes is coming. This is something that I've been voicing about for a long time, but now there's a sudden influx of traffic, and at this point, I really can be no longer patient. We really need a solution, whether Popeyes comes and this gets approved or not. We do need a solution.
Thank you. What we need?
Sure. Twenty seconds. The numbers, absolutely, yes. You know, the access onto Highway 53 is obviously at Georgia State Road, GDOT, you know, jurisdictional road. We've been in talks with GDOT about, you know, the appropriate access we need to have on Highway 53 to make the site work. You know, they want us to use that existing driveway on Highway 53, which has been there for years and years, probably before Bojangles was ever on Highway 53. I want to let you know that the numbers as far as traffic, you know, 700 cars might sound like a lot of cars to most people, but you know, during our peak hour, we're looking at, you know, roughly 46 to 50 cars, so that's roughly, you know, less than one car a minute. You know, it's.
Excuse me, Mr. Patton, how many hours are you open?
The usual Bojangles hours are 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. or later up to 1:00 a.m.
Right. So Popeyes has only opened 12 hours, and you're saying in your peak, it's only 50 cars an hour?
The peak ITE.
How bad doesn't that?
The peak ITE for cars, for new created, new generated trips, not fast-five trips. So if you're looking at cars that are going out of their way to go, you know, out of this congestion issue, and you know, that normally wouldn't be passing by Highway 53, the normal peak hour for a PM, you know, for PM trips is roughly, you know, 44 cars per hour in the peak hour.
Well, I assure.
So which is the most, you know.
Adding zero cars, so we've already got a major congestion issue, and if the, and if the council would care to look at the videos, I'd be more than happy to provide those, an email and copy as well. It's already an existing problem, and I made sure that I videoed it after peak hours based off of the website for Popeyes, so that you could actually see where we currently are and then how in the world would the city of Jasper handle any additional congestion.
With all due respect, I really appreciate the points. You know, we're looking at an intersection with, you know, the Kroger and the Home Depot right behind it, you know, and the out parcels all combined, roughly 200,000 square feet, you know, of commercial use, and we're proposing, you know, 2,900 square feet. It's about 1.3% of, you know, the commercial square footage that stands to the north of Camp Creek, I'm sorry, Camp Road. And yeah, I mean, we're more than happy to work with Jasper and, you know, figure out what we need to do, you know, on the plans to, you know, make this work. You know, we're willing to work with Jasper and GDOT as well, you know, to make sure what do we need to do on our site to help handle this problem. I don't think it's a problem of this site specifically, I think it's a problem of the existing intersection and, you know, the existing traffic number. Obviously, it's already an issue, and, you know, there's no, there's no Popeyes or anything on that parcel right now that's creating much traffic. So I think it's a greater issue than the parcel itself, and annexing this parcel, I don't think, you know, creates a much broader issue in the grand scheme of things.
I would ask, is GDOT aware not only that it's, you know, just being looked at being annexed in as a C2, but also that the use is a drive-through?
Yes, they are.
Because we've spoken to GDOT on several occasions at the persuasiveness of Mayor Weaver and as has Mr. Ramblower, looking to, when he did his remodel, to be able to help with the flow of traffic into Wendy's, and we've had no success.
I can give you some contacts at GDOT if you'd like to.
Well, surely if they'll allow it for you, then they would allow it for us, so perhaps if you do, you know, if you're successful, perhaps that will prove to be beneficial for all of us.
Along Camp Road, I mean, I don't believe, I think that is a city road?
No, not Camp, 53.
Okay, 53, okay. You know, they do try to limit the access points once it gets to a certain point, from what I've seen.
Right.
They do like right D cell lanes, and you know, they really do like adding those on the site, so I'm not sure who you've been talking to, but I would gladly use some contacts, guys that can help you out, guys that we usually reach out to when we're doing developments.
I just hope that we wouldn't be denied if they were approved, because again, there's only so many access points allowed, and we've been asking for years.
Have you guys had a conversation with the state DOT about?
I have not, but as Patton said, this is a state, Georgia State Highway. GDOT is in charge of Highway 53. Of course, they're not for Camp Road, and if there is a problem caused by this development of this one corner, I feel sure that the GDOT will look at it, excuse me, and put the appropriate turning lanes in.
Well, got a concern also.
Okay.
And my name is Roger Strut. I actually work for Bojangles, but I also live in Hill City. From 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, you cannot even take Camp Road. I go all the way down, past Home Depot, and turn left to go home that way because it's so congested that you cannot make that left turn in that, at Kroger's. There's too many cars coming down at one time. I mean, I've sat through three red lights there multiple times because there's so many cars, there's no turn. So that little turn lane you're talking about, you won't get a single car in there because they can't get in there. What you're going to do is congest, the whole place is going to become congested, no one's going to move, there's going to be multiple accidents. If you stand there, if you go stand there today and watch for a couple hours during busy peak times, there's at least 10, 15 times accidents could occur right now because people don't follow rules, they're running the lights already, they come flying through, especially those trucks, big huge semi trucks and the chicken trucks. They take the little side road, too. They cut you off, they almost hit you. The only way you can get over there now is to go down by the flood river and take your chances on sliding down there as quick as you can. There's times that I go, I come from Canton to Jasper, I take South Coast Road, the back road all the way up, which is way out of the way, because I know I can't get through there. It's impossible. So unless that road's fixed, this thing you're talking about is not going to work. You're going to have so many accidents, you're going to have people killed right there, what's going to happen. And I have a young daughter who works at Bojangles also, and I fear for her life every day that she drives down that road during these peak times because it is so congested. And if you don't believe it, I'll stand with you and do it once, Steve. We'll stand right there and watch what happens every single day. So it's just a bad location, it's not a good location.
To Roger's point, four managers' vehicles have been hit at Bojangles. You know the parallel parking that is right there next to our sign that borders Highway 53? Four manager cars have been hit in accidents that have occurred at Camp Road and 53. They ruined our landscaping, jumped our curb.
Hit us hard.
Four manager's cars have been hit, four different accidents, in addition of how their sign repaired on two different occasions. Arnaud Towing did the most recent one for us as far as documenting that. There's been, Mr. Ramblower's retaining wall there at Camp Road and 53 has been hit four times. Those were different accidents, we just happened to have the same numbers, but his retaining walls been hit on four different occasions. The accidents that have occurred there have already been horrific, but to think that we would, you know, whether or not he's going to generate, you know, cars to that, you know, he says new cars to that area, well, let's say that that was a car trading out from McDonald's to now to Popeyes, or let's say they were trading from Burger King to Popeyes. Any, those 700 cars will be coming through that intersection, and I believe it will be more than half, but irregardless, 350 cars would be a hard number for us. At this point, we're already over congested.
It needs to be three lanes there, it really does. I mean, the access to Hill City is ridiculous now. I mean, it's, it's, it's bad. It's so bad that I'm, when I, you know, I probably will sell my house to the other side of Jasper because I can't physically get through it. It's not safe, and you're talking about adding more and more vehicles. That turn you're talking about at Kroger, you're not, nobody's going to make a turn in there. It's going to be so blocked and so congested, it's not going to be possible. You can go right now and look and see, it's not possible. I couldn't come that way just now to come here to this meeting.
I don't know how a right D cell lane that close to the intersection would work, other than for people using it to try to get around traffic.
Yeah, you're going to create, you're going to create a way for accidents to happen by putting that road in there. They're going to try to sneak out of there by a corner of Kroger's because you can't get through a lot of Krogers. Without putting the arrows in, that intersection is not going to work.
But there's going to be an enforcement problem, though, that the police department, the sheriff department will be getting.
They could sit there all day, they could ride thousands of days there right now.
They definitely could.
I guarantee you that. And you're talking about, and most of them are big vehicles that are doing this. And I ride a motorcycle as well, and I have to, I just go around, I don't get that one because it's just so dangerous. And unless you live over there, you have to come home that way every day, and your family comes home that way every day, you don't worry as much about it because you're over on this side of town.
Not to mention each day, about 15 school buses travel through there. They travel on Camp Road, and they back up, you know, it takes them three to four lights to try to get through, and they're all trying to turn left there on 53, head out to the west side of the county. And it just blocks, it blocks Wendy's completely, and it blocks, you know, our only real entrance that we have on Camp Road, the other one you can't turn left into, to Chevron, although people are.
What was the mayor's conversation with you about? What was he talking about, David?
It was positive. He had several plans. One was the house that's located behind us, the brown home, the residential room, trying to put a D cell lane there for a right turn into the shared entrance that we have with Trout's and Chevron. He sent me, he gave me the contacts to DOT to look for a left-hand turn lane into Chevron, Trout's, and Bojangles, and I asked if that turn lane that we built over a decade ago in front of Bojangles, between us and Wendy's on Camp Road, could be connected for an easy line out. And he said, all of this takes money, time, and that it just, it was, we were going to have to be patient. You can imagine my frustration when we have been so patient in phone calls and meetings and letters. I've written a letter to the city council, I've saved it, that was two years ago, addressing this concern as well.
The DOT, I'm just asking a question here.
Yes, sir.
The DOT indicated you that if the traffic flow were more, that they would put that left turn lane behind there between you and Chevron, is that what you're asking for the left turn lane? That middle lane?
That's correct, yes, sir, the left end.
They indicated that there weren't enough, that there was not a high enough traffic count for that, or was there a reason, specific reason they gave you for not putting it there?
It's currently a right turn into Waffle House. So without widening the road, there's no additional room for a left-hand turn.
Plus, we have to deal with the state right-of-way up through there, and the GDOT has gotten so much stricter about when you do things that have the highway property involved, and what they call a Gulf project, I believe it is, and I'm sure the mayor and them have looked into it, but it, it, it does take a long time to do anything within that. But it, I didn't, I didn't realize that the, the accidents were as high as you seem to think they are.
I know they are, I've witnessed them from.
We watched them, we have front row view, and I'm sure the city could provide us the numbers.
The other problem that we have now, that y'all aren't concerned, the emergency vehicles can't even get out when they come over. When they have to get to the interstate, it's a nightmare for them. If they have to swing around and back and forth.
If there's three or four school buses sitting there, though, maybe they shouldn't, the school buses shouldn't use that road.
But you can't, how can you deny a school bus the right to use a highway?
That's my question, too, you know.
If you were going to do what you're talking about, you should clear it down that section of the road completely, not allow any traffic.
You know, it was my understanding, but now, this is, this is strictly from hearing from regulars at Bojangles, but it was my understanding that if that was the safest route for the school buses, even though it's the most congested, excuse my allergies, so that they wouldn't have to cross over 515 and 53, you know, a major intersection. And so the idea was that they were, they're coming across down there at QT, and they're crossing there, and then coming through Camp Road, but they back up from where Camp Road and 53 are at the intersection in question, all the way to have a Coleman electric.
Every day.
Every day.
Multiple times.
At schools in session, yeah, depending on as the different schools let out.
All right. Anybody?
I believe I will speak. I'm Gary Copeland, we do own the property. It's going to be so regardless if we annex it into the city or not. Everything Crystal said is true. She said, all her complaints are justified. It is a little narrow road on the south side of 53, has nothing to do with us, but she's got major problems. I go in Bojangles just about every day, and I sit out in Camp Road and wait. We're on the other side, we have a business out there. We don't have that traffic flow problem. The intersection to Kroger was built just for that. It's plenty wide enough. We also designated both lots for ingress, and so you can come in, either you can come in the Kroger side or you can come in the 53 side. We don't have any traffic problems on that side of the road, but y'all do need to work with Crystal over there. The road's barely big enough for two cars to pass on the south side of 53, but we're not talking about that corner, we're talking about the corner on the other side. So with that, I don't foresee any problems with the traffic. These boys have worked through that, they've drawn it up nicely so that the traffic can flow through there, but like I said, the Crystal's from like the city or the county, we're not sure what Camp Road belongs to on that side of the road. The mayor and the commissioner are debating now if it belongs to the city or the county, and who's going to pave it and who's going to widen it. And she does need some help with DOT if you can help her there, but to our, our part tonight, I don't see a problem.
Any other questions? Mr. Walker? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to either recommend, recommend annexation or deny annexation to the city. Okay? I've got a motion to recommend acceptance, and we're going to recommend to the city council, or the motion is to recommend to the city council, accepting the property into the city for annexation. Okay? Do you understand that, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
All right, so a motion, I need a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. I'm in favor of recommendation to the city council for annexation, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so a motion, I need a second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of recommendation to the city council for annexation, say aye. Aye. Okay. I'll do it. Then this meeting is adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
We have that.
Motion to adjourn? Second. Motion and a second. We are adjourned.